I'd like to call to order the Regisville City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 11, 2025. First order of business is invocation by Pastor Andrew Brown, Main Street United Methodist Church, 221 South Main Street, Reesville. Pastor Brown, I hope I'm not embarrassing you by saying this, but Pastor Brown was one of my fifth grade students.
And both of our hairstyles have changed.
Right.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Honorable Mayor Gorman, distinguished city council members, your charge as a city council is in many eyes, a divine appointment chosen by the will of the people. To help us equally enjoy our rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, we see your commitment to this community. We see your efforts to walk with integrity, and we celebrate your pursuit of the common good for all, and we together pray for this evening's deliberations. Let us pray. Almighty God most high, Creator of all and giver of every good and perfect gift, we give thanks for the gift of Reesville. For the citizens who planted vines from which we now reparket, thank you for the times of plenty and the times of lean. God mend our every flaw and help us to plant for the future, knowing our work is never-ending. We give thanks for the gift of this city council. Bless and keep them in their work. Bless all city employees who support and administer the will of this body and guide them all in their chosen work on our behalf. And oh God, have mercy on us, for we are but humans. Guide us and direct us and give us faith, give us hope, and especially Lord, give us love. In the name of the one who is the same yesterday, today, and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is the consent agenda. We have four items. Is there anyone who'd like to have one of those four items pulled? If not, can we get a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item is a public hearing. Consideration open. Ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Reesville by voluntary annexation or annexing approximately 63 acres. Parcel number 185013Z1 off Reed School Road. A 2025-202 enclosure one, Jason Harden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman Manager. In your agenda packets is a fully executed request by the owners of Rockingham County Tax Department, 185013Z1, shown on the tax record as Reesville Bowen LLC, to voluntarily annex 62.479 acres off Reesville Road. This is a contiguous annexation and already runs through a portion of the property. Finds the petition to be valid and recommends approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limit after the required public hearing. And I'll be glad to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions, Jason?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Public hearing will open at 6:05. Is there one, anyone here who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at 6:06. What is the pleasure of council?
Make a motion. For voluntary annexation requests be approved.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, update on ordinance to repair 105 Gilmer Street enclosure two, Jason Harden.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you recall, the 60 days expire on January 13th, 2025, to comply with the code enforcement order to repair the building facade at 105 Gilmer Street. At council's February meeting, it was requested that I bring further information regarding the cost to repair the facade and the structure. Staff has reached out to contractors to procure quotes for the work as requested. However, we have no responses at this time. We will continue to solicit those quotes for the work to be done. It's notable that since my last update that the owner has begun work on the facade, they've done some structural work and they've wrapped it, so that should help with the moisture infiltration at the bare minimum. They did submit a revision to their building plans for the facade repair. That's being reviewed by inspections currently, so there is work being done on it at present time. That's the extent of the updates I have at this time. We're just looking for direction from council and how you'd like to proceed.
What was the, what was the, the day submit in terms to the repair of the facade that y'all were looking at?
So, building permit was issued, they reapplied for the building permit to repair the facade back in November. Now they've come back, they revised some of the plans to repair it.
What's the revisions consist of?
I'm not aware. I'd have to ask inspections on exactly what's being changed in the plans, but there was some kind of revision that they wanted to make and they wanted to see if the inspector would approve it. I'd be glad to ask that question for you.
I was just curious, because if he's in the midst of repairing, I don't see where, as of right now, we could act upon anything, could we? Anyways.
That's, that's up to you all.
And Mayor and Council, if I may, we just wanted to come back and give a report because construction started on this building immediately after council meeting from last month, and we just felt like we owed each of you an update on just kind of where we are. We can continue to keep you posted, but we, we know that we had asked for this item to be added to the agenda for this month as a continuation. When we asked for that, repair had not started, so we just wanted to follow up on the information that we have at this time. We can, those are some questions, I think that Councilmember Martin had asked. We can get responses for that, and I could follow up in an email. If any other questions you may have as council, you would like us to look into, we certainly can.
Absolutely.
My, my comment would be, I would assume we would just continue to monitor the situation, but if he's actively working every so often, Nick could, do we have an expiration of building permits now?
The state statute is a year, so a year if they stop work, then it expires. That's covered under the general statute.
I would just want us to monitor it, make sure that he continues to work in a timely manner to complete the project. Be my opinion.
Any other comments?
When was the last time we reached out?
Actually, I spoke with the owner myself this past week before, and asked him, you know, and that's when he said he was submitting the plan revision, which he did afterward, so he did do that. So he's just waiting on that approval or not from the inspector to, to move forward, is the impression that I got.
Jason, just, just so I understood you right, from where he started this work right there at the last meeting we had, where he put the facade, whatever he did, windows on it and all, you're saying, so if he, how long does it last? If he, if he stops working, he don't do anything else? He's got how much period of time?
He has a year.
He has a year?
That's correct.
We're gonna go through this thing again?
From the date of, a year from the date of issuance?
Of the permit, which would have been December, correct, Mr. Harden?
Yes, he has to start work within six months, and then if he starts work within six months, then he has a year from that date to finish the work, so it would have been when he did the work, actually, I believe, under, but I can check the language on that, but that's my impression that I've gotten from inspections.
I think it's a year from the date he begins, but.
That's the general statute, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm happy that he's doing the work, and I hope he continues it, and I hope he does it all to code, but at the same time, it's kind of disheartening that he almost deliberately goes against what we need him to do and what he's expected to do and what the permit says to do.
Well, he still falls under this ordinance, correct? So, at any given time, if he, his permit may be good, but if at any given time, he decides, well, I submitted, building inspectors approve or whatever, if he lets this job lay dormant for the next 30, 60 days, we can then go back and vote where we're at to force the repair or do the repair or whatever.
Could, yes, sir.
Correct? So, we're not gonna fall under the same clause of waiting a year.
And Mayor and Council, if you would like, what I could do, since this is a, a public matter, I can start bringing this and doing an update in my monthly manager's report, just so you're aware of where we are with this particular one. So, Mr. Harden, if you and I can just make a note, and Ms. Dabler, for my monthly manager's report, until this issue gets resolved, we'll continue just to give updates like we do other projects, if that's sufficient for council for now.
That's good. That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Harden.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda, consideration of change order, number one, for wastewater treatment plant bulk nutrient removal project, enclosure three, Josh Beck.
Good, Councilor, see you, ma'am. Sir, in your packet is quite a bit of information I wanted to give to you guys. The first thing about the BNR project, just to remember, we actually started this back in July, and this is the first change order that we're bringing to you, but I want to be clear that it's actually three things that, that are being presented to you tonight for this one change order. So, we take a lot of small changes, a lot of times, and we compile them into one just to minimize truthfully paperwork, right? So, so in this current packet, you'll see with the PCO one, three, and five, and so that's what we're referring to here. So, PCO one in the BNR project is, is kind of easily seen, if you look in the manager's report, I've tried to provide you guys photos of the aeration basins. Inside the aeration basins, we have a number of structural supports that are supporting return piping for our bugs, our nutrient to continue. We have mixers in there that make sure we get the right air mixture so that the bugs are doing what we need them to, and so, and within your packet for PCO number one, there's an explanation from the engineers that basically want to change the design. This was not a contractor issued change, this is actually an engineered issue change from SKA, that they want to change the design of the metal members that are in the wastewater from a hot galvanized, hot dip galvanized to this zinc clad R, and their reasoning in that is outlined in your memo, is that they feel in a wastewater environment, as we all know, metal, water, I can certainly imagine metal in wastewater is not gonna last very long without a proper coating to protect it, and so they believe that this product will, will last longer than the original specifications. So, in working with the contractor, we obtained the pricing as outlined for the $67,024 for that particular one. The second one in here, which is PCO number three, is due to a number of conflicts underground that we simply couldn't foresee. Obviously, we didn't dig up every pipe out there on the wastewater plant project during the design phase to understand how we need to dip and maneuver pipes underground. We lay it out as best we can, given the as-built documents from the seventies, as to where those pipes should be, try to make some assumptions on those elevations, but as you can see in your memo, there's a red line document that kind of sketches those changes in the field that we had to make. So there were a number of new bins and welds associated with that, and about 70 feet of additional pipe to get around the basin there as shown, to make those proper tie-ins. The tie-in was actually a little bit different than the as-built drawings had indicated, and so that's kind of gives you the explanation for the third one, which is the 41512. The final one, PCO number five, is actually something I requested for the $1,312. When we did the alum feed system, it has a containment center, basically a concrete basin around it, and it's a large chemical that sits in the middle of that. For whatever reason, the plan showed that the control system for that is going to be inside the containment system. So if that, if that container actually began to leak, then my staff is standing in a fluid working on electrical, and I just felt like that was not a safe situation, so to pour a minor concrete pad just outside that basin, rerun the controls over, the contractors asked for that $1,312. But there's a, like I said, a substantial amount of information in your packet. I did, in case somebody was interested, I did print some information on the zinc clad R specs, if somebody wants to see that. I was truthfully not familiar with that at all, and so, but in looking through that, it does say that it's extremely good at corrosion protection, mechanical resistance, and a high, high resistance against water and condensation, so based on the Sherwin-Williams spec that I printed off of that particular product. So, I know that's a lot, I'll be happy to answer any questions I can have regarding this, and go from there.
Any questions, Josh?
I have a couple of questions. This was really hard to understand, and I had to make a lot of notes.
Hey, it was hard for me to understand.
So, I understand that the original construction had not been reviewed properly, so that was the first place, so that, that wasn't our fault, so who?
So, so this is a situation, if you remember the BNR project, where we had a set of documents, and then we were held for many years with a lack of A to C, which is authorization to construct from the state. So the plans were kind of set, and then, yes, in fairness to, to all parties, it was, the drawings that went out for bid were overlooked on the structural side and not stamped for construction, so, and then a peer review also occurred at SKA because the plans had set so long, due to the delays, that another engineer picked it up, reviewed those drawings, and said, given the, given this environment, this material will last much longer if we apply this product versus the original product. That's what they're getting at.
Okay, my second question is, so they decided the hot dipped was better than the paint, then they came back and said that something else was better than the paint, and then this last one was better than the hot dipped, and you just gave us some statistics on what, how it's gonna last much longer. How much longer? A year longer, 10 years longer, 50 years longer?
Good question. I can't, I honestly would just be guessing. I just can go off what the engineers are recommending based on the environment. Again, it's a, it's a wastewater environment, obviously there's, you know, there's also a significant aeration component which is changing the, the chemical components in that basin. Obviously, whatever is coming downstream is going into that, so it is a pretty harsh environment, to say the least, but I, I just try to take what the, this is beyond me, I'm certainly not a structural engineer, but they felt like it was for the cost, even though seeing the cost, they felt like this was still the better option for the city, given that it's, you know, truthfully, it's an eight million plus dollar project. These numerous structural components of this are holding large mixers, motors up in the air, the motor's obviously outside of the wastewater, and then the impeller is sitting in the wastewater to mix it, so there's a substantial amount of weight up there, but as far as how long, is it gonna last, five years or 10 years more? I really don't know, to be honest with you.
But you feel confident with what they've given you?
Based on the information I've looked at, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I would just like to say, I'm impressed, Theresa. And I think I understand where she's coming from in terms of citizens wondering where their tax dollars are going, but I think it's important too for her to understand, and not all citizens understand, and to try to help reiterate what she said, these drawings set for multiple years and technology's ever changing, so these engineers do have, like, leadway in terms of when the project starts and begins, and the time that the drawings were designed, and essentially have an expiration. They, I would say we're fortunate that they did decide to take a peer review to review this, you know. At first, I was wondering how they come up, I was gonna ask a similar question, but knowing now that these drawings were a couple of years old, answers, answers the question, and in terms of responsibility as well, but I was impressed that you had thought about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, what's the pleasure of council?
May I make a motion to approve the Turner Murphy's change order number one?
Do we got a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of advertising on new Regisville High School football stadium digital sign, and accompanying budget ordinance number 11. Enclosure four, manager, I mean, manager more.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're really excited tonight to present a marketing opportunity for the city of Reesville to partner for this marketing opportunity with Reesville High School. So Reesville High School is selling advertising opportunities for a new school, our scoreboard in the football stadium. This would be a great city marketing opportunity to promote economic development and showcase our marketing brand, Team Reesville. The cost would be $25,000 for up to five years or longer, that would roughly equate to $5,000 each year. This is a great advertising opportunity for the city, for the city to continue to promote our brand, Team Reesville. If this is something council's agreeable to, the suggested motion would be to approve advertising opportunity with Reesville High School scoreboard and approve attached budget amendment.
I'd like to say that I've attended several football stadiums that have these kinds of boards, and it's, the advertising opportunities are tremendous, as you consider this.
I would like to say, I couldn't agree with this more. Reesville advertises all the time, Reesville Football, and what better way for us to promote ourselves than to promote with Reesville Football as, as well, so.
Well, the Team Reesville concept came from Reesville Football.
I'd like to make one comment, please. I would just like to make sure that, I'd like to acknowledge to the school board and to the county of how much we are, we are investing in Team Reesville and in our high school, in our participation and in our investment, but we would like the school board and the county to return that investment and to consider us when they're thinking about new schools. Our schools are in bad shape. We have a wonderful football field, it's absolutely beautiful, it's probably one of the best in the state, and we need, we need the school building to back it up, so I'm all for the advertising, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there's more than just advertising on that, on that scoreboard.
Any other comments? What's the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to approve the advertising opportunity with Reesville High School scoreboard and approve the attached budget amendment.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of a veterans banner program and policy, enclosure five, Montana Brown, marketing and economic development.
Council, if I may, Chase Lemmons is actually gonna present this tonight, and I do want to just kind of give you an idea before Mr. Lemmons goes over this concept. It's probably been maybe a year or two years ago, Mayor Gorman, I believe you and I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Romalita Harrison, and she brought this idea to us and asked if we would look into this about a veterans banner policy for the city and to be able to promote our veterans. So we're really excited to unveil a concept we have, we're just looking for your approval, so, Mr. Lemmons, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Council, good to see you all again. So as it's in the agenda packet, we do have a memorandum for a veterans banner program. Into assist in placemaking efforts of downtown Reesville, city staff has designed and placed banners on the poles attached to the light posts downtown. These banners help add character to our downtown while also portraying a message to those that visit the area. In the last year, we have displayed banners with a summer theme, a fall theme, as well as a winter holiday theme. City staff now proposes having banners dedicated to military veterans who have ties to Reesville. The banners will be paid for privately, either by local veterans or their families. There will also be an opportunity for organizations to sponsor, which can help reduce the fees associated with producing the banners. The banners will then be displayed from mid-May through Labor Day. Once that period is complete, the banners will be taken down by city staff. Parties that paid for a banner may then pick them up and keep them. Attached with the memorandum is the recommended policy, as well as the application that must be completed. If council agrees, please approve a motion to accept and implement the proposed veterans banner policy provided in the agenda packet.
Any questions, Jason?
I have a question. Thank you, sir. Will they be in color?
Yes, we do plan to do them in color.
Will they be two-sided? Will it be the same veteran on both sides, or?
I believe it will. Yes, where they will be able to pay for them individually and keep them, so it'll be, yeah, the same on both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have a question on the connection to the city of Reesville for the veterans.
Yes.
So just to get clarification, if a son or daughter, grandchild lives here, but their father was in a different city or whatever, passed away, does that comply?
It would still be absolutely acceptable. Just any ties to Reesville, and it can be a fallen veteran to someone who's active now.
Got you, okay.
And how, what's our limit? How many banners can we have?
We're looking at around 29 right now, and as we grow this, there may be a possibility for more down the future, but for the first year, we're looking at 29.
So this will be done for so many months?
Yes, it'll run from mid-May through Labor Day. We just think it's a good idea to recognize our veterans that way.
Are we thinking about starting this May?
Yes.
So how soon? Do you need the information?
Right now, let me look at the policy again. I believe the deadline is the end of April.
April 25th.
April 25th. Yep, that's correct.
And did you give a cost in that?
$65.
Yes, yeah, we're looking at 65 per.
I think this is something that'll go for real big.
I actually sent, sent this to the city manager from an individual from the sheriff's office, his father was on one in Pennsylvania a month or so ago, and she advised me that they were all. were already working on this and I made this request, so definitely.
Would it be possible, this is just, say if I wanted one and I would do my $65, I could donate 100 and the rest could go to whatever you needed?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe that would definitely be a possibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? What is the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to accept and implement the proposed veterans banner policy.
Second.
A motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of a customer service policy for the city of Reesville. Enclosure six, Ms. Leann Basinger, human resources.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, madam manager, thank you for letting me come to you this evening. The city manager had established, 25 is the year, we really as an organization wanted to focus on improved customer service for our residents. This policy is the next step in that. If approved by y'all tonight, we will make sure that every employee gets a copy and signs that they have received it. To date, we have included things such as key measures in our performance appraisals as far as customer service. We have implemented an annual award called the Above and Beyond Award for exemplary customer service. We will, we have provided intensive training for our frontline employees that interact with the community on a regular basis and this is just the next step. And so I'm asking for you to approve our customer service policy.
The Above and Beyond Award, how many a year do you give out?
We give one a year.
Okay, to the whole, all?
To the, to the individual that was recognized for the most exemplary customer service for that year. Emerald Stone at the penthouse was the recipient of this year's award.
Right, I didn't know if it was part of one or what, but it's just one.
One to the city, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
Much needed and appreciated.
That's what I want to say, it's a great idea, fantastic. In fact, I've heard some comments about some of the customer service already.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. It's nice to know that we are making a positive impact.
I think it's great to know that the employees are accepting it and they're willing to know that we need to make these changes for them and for the city.
Anytime you visit a place, most of the time the presentation that you receive once you get there sticks with you more so than anything else. I think it's a good deal.
I would like to say one thing. I noticed our county manager is back there. They've been assisting us with building inspections and I myself have received multiple phone calls of the very, the customer service they have received from your building inspectors on behalf of the city of Reesville and it has, the response has been overwhelmingly positive. So thank you as well for your staff's customer service.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, what's the pleasure of council?
I'd like to make a motion that the Senate bill be accepted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of ordinances amended to meet Senate Bill 300 requirements. First reading, enclosure seven, Chief Gibson.
Council members, City Manager Moore, thank y'all for allowing me to present this. As most of you know about, from the fall of '21, Senate Bill 300 was passed and a lot of our ordinance that involved fines or criminal penalties had to be updated. And so in '21 and '23, we brought to council several, several ordinances. Unfortunately, there's a couple that fell through the crack and probably going forward, we might find more that falls through the crack. But we recognize two that we need to present to you guys tonight for first reading only, no motion or actions needed tonight. Section 11.41, 11 dash 41 permit required, that deals with obtaining the permit before you can have a special event or parade and it attaches criminal penalty with it if you fail to do that. And then the next section is 17 dash 75, parking in central business district. There's two areas that I think you guys, the council can talk about tonight and that we can amend if you so desire. So in that particular one, one of the ones that we're really focused on is parking from 12 midnight to 4:00 AM prohibited, to keep people from, keeping vehicles there for extended periods of time in the downtown district. However, A and B, really this is, and Ms. Stadler, the clerk, has done exceptional job researching this and I don't know how old this ordinance is, but it's pretty old and the order of changing of positions is back when we had police officers downtown marking tires and we no longer do that. And then the one, parking in lot number two, between the water side, where it's in More History, we don't have that anymore. So if you want to consider repealing those two sections, we can include that in the next final reading. But that's all we got for this one, just the first reading and then any comments you have on that particular section.
Any questions, Chief?
Chief, I just have one on the parking issue between midnight and 4:00 AM. How does that, how will that go into play if you have an event at one of the event centers that may run, depending on what it is, I don't think there's a time limit of how, how long you hold an event, but what if they run to a 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock thing?
Yeah, that's, we're going to apply common sense to that. If it's an event where people are actively in the building or if you have a building owner or a tenant that's in there working in there after midnight, but they're in there actively working, we're not going to buy into that. This is just the ones that have been parked there overnight and just stay there continuously, taking up valuable parking spaces for the merchants.
This is only on Scale Street, not the side?
Correct, Scale Street. We're here and settled.
Any other questions?
So we need to make a motion to amend that?
No, that was the first meeting, first reading.
But if we could get a consensus that y'all would like to eliminate A and B?
Yeah, reference the water.
Oh, okay, okay.
Consensus would be that?
Yes. Yep. Okay, next item, consideration of annual municipal agreement to cover ongoing maintenance of the proposed interchange lighting at US 29 and Barn Street. enclosure eight, Josh Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. If you guys remember at your September 10th city council meeting, we passed a resolution for $450,000, which was for the capital cost of the lighting upgrades that we wanted to do at 29 and Barn Street interchange. Within that memo, I mentioned to you guys that part of that would be the city would incur the ongoing electrical expenses and maintenance expenses. So since that September approval, we have been working with Duke and DOT to set up an meter account for the extra lighting when that's needed. And so we will get directly billed for that. That's not in the agreement. That'll just be another meter account like the 40 or whatever I have already with all the pump stations and everything else, so. But in your packet tonight is the actual ongoing maintenance cost that was outlined in that memo for 31, 3,150 bucks per year and that will be for ongoing maintenance of the eight fixtures that are on the approach ramps and the 420-foot mast arm poles. You guys obviously have probably seen them in like a large cloverleaf intersection where they got numerous bulbs way up high and so they basically illuminate the bulk of the intersection, but then we have all the smaller poles that run down the approach ramps. And so again, this is DOT's agreement. We have several of these already in effect for all of our railroad crossings, for example is a good one. We also have one for when we do our, to them when we do with the mowing. So this will get billed annually. As you can see in the, in the contract, they're not billing us today. Obviously that project is not done, so once that project is up and running, then that will start this ongoing fee that will be associated. So if you guys approve this tonight, obviously we're in budget season now, so it's a great time. So we will work with Summer and Chris and add that into the street department's budget to cover this ongoing as needed, so. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Beck?
I have one. So the 3,150 is the annual charge?
Annual charge.
Is there any possibility that there would ever end up being more charges added to that and what would they be?
So I read through it again today. I didn't see any kind of escalation charge. There is, there is a, I forget what page it's on now, but there was a statement about additional cost, but I did not see a, like an increase. Most of these have been the same price for a long time that we currently have, but there was a little clause and I'm trying to find it on the spot. The department will participate in 0% of actual cost. Both parties understand this is an estimated cost and subject to change. So, but at least historically, our, like our railroad crossings, they've, they've been the same dollar amount year after year, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of contracting with third-party building inspections for expedited service and fee. Enclosure nine, Manager Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So wanted just to bring to council's attention in discussions with our attorney, a possible third option we could offer our residential and commercial builders here. The city of Reesville is currently contracting with Rockingham County and I certainly appreciate our county manager and his willingness to go above and beyond to help us with this, so we really do appreciate that. They've been very gracious to contract with the city while we're looking for our lead building inspector in November of 2024 and this has been a great partnership and is working well. Residential and commercial growth is occurring in Reesville at an exceptional rate. In the past few months, we've had large developers needing expedited inspections due to the size of their projects and Rockingham County has been great in helping with this. In addition to the city contracting with Rockingham County, the city could consider allowing third-party building inspections. General Statute 160D-1105, other arrangements for inspections. A local government may contract with an individual who is not a local government employee, but who holds one of the applicable certifications as provided in General Statute 160D-1103 or with the employer of an individual who holds one of the applicable certifications as provided in General Statute 160D-1103. What we would be asking is to provide this as an alternative option to continue our partnership with the county. However, this could be an option for Reesville at the moment because we do have some large commercial development taking place. So if that commercial developer or residential developer wanted to look at hiring a third-party inspector, they could do that. We would like to consider exploring that. That would not be a fee passed on to the taxpayers. It would be an expedited service fee. I don't know what that would look like at the moment, but that would be an expedited service fee that the individual requesting the inspection would pay. It would be an above and beyond fee, so it's not an additional fee that would be associated to the residents here. But this is just providing an option to where if you had a developer, residential or commercial, they have that opportunity to pay that additional fee if they wanted to get this inspection. So what I'm asking for tonight is if the appetite of council is to allow the city to contract with a third-party building inspections for an expedited service and fee and to allow the city manager and city attorney to explore contract options with qualified third-party inspectors. There may not be an appetite for you to allow that, but we just saw this as an option in addition to our partnership with the county to offer this as an expedited service to those who may or may not want to use it. You would not be forced to use it, but it's an option with the growth we're seeing.
Be a way to make our customer service better.
Would the third-party contract be made prior to some, like if someone needed it, we would say, well, here's what we suggest or do they bring that person to us?
No, the contract with the third-party would be directly with the city and the third-party. So that also gives you, that gives the city some continuity to ensure that the building inspector is certified because this, this specific language in General Statute 160D-1105 grants that authority to a local government to contract with someone. So no, that would be, that would be a contract between the city and the third-party.
Right, thank you.
If I may, if I may say a few things on this, I've actually been working with city manager on this. Any inspector is state certified, they're the same as any inspector that we would hire to represent us as well and are held to the same standards as any other inspector at any other municipality. So it's not like anyone can get a substandard inspector. You're not going to get different work if an inspector was to do a faulty inspection. He faces the same liabilities as any other inspector would and would risk revocation of his inspection license. That was something that was brought up, you know, that I have heard, so I wanted to address that situation as well. And as like she said, the way that this 160D is written up, she holds authority, so these people would be contracted and allowed to perform inspections under, under her authority just like an employee. So if these people went out there, misrepresented the city, she has the authority to terminate that contract immediately. State, the state put this statute in because much like our municipality, there are multiple municipalities along, all around the state who are shorthanded on inspectors, number one. Number two, every municipality cannot afford to pay inspectors what they are making in a lot of other localities. So as we know, we've struggled to hire an inspector in our position. So therefore, this allows that option, you know, for these inspectors to go out, contract with the city. And an example for the apartment complex that we've been dealing with, this would be an ideal situation for the apartment complex. There's 190 inspections lined up for Tom Holderby's apartments this week that the county will be performing and that takes a lot of time away from the county to continue their efforts to provide the service they have to along. And that's not a common thing to do 190 individual inspections at one time, so that's, you know, what I have to say about this.
Okay, any other comments or questions? What is the pleasure of council?
I would make a motion to approve, to allow the city of Reesville to contract with a third-party building inspector for an expedited service and fee to allow the city manager and city attorney to explore contract options with qualified third-party inspectors.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda, consideration of agreement for community service work program. Enclosure 10, Manager Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So what we have before you tonight... So what we have before you tonight, I do believe we have some that are currently in place, but I think we needed to refresh this since we have some, some new faces and new staff members. But the city of Reedsville needs assistance with litter pickup throughout the city and at Lake Reedsville. The city also needs assistance with mowing, basic maintenance, and cleaning of facilities at Lake Reedsville. Councilmember Shannon Coats gave me contact information from Morgan Maranzo, who is the judicial service coordinator with NC Department of Dole Corrections, District Seventeen. Ms. Maranzo provided me the attached documentation and community service work program recipient agency agreement. If this is something that council's interested in pursuing, it would be to authorize the city manager to sign the community service work program recipient agency agreement and coordinate community service work program schedules with Ms. Morgan Maranzo.
Any questions or comments?
I have one, of course. So as far as accidents, insurance, workers' comp, we wouldn't be responsible for any of that. It's all laid out in the agreement.
I, I would just like to say, when I had this conversation with city manager, when I used to work at City Lake when I was in college, starting college, working part-time, I was, that was one of the tasks I was given to be in charge of community service workers out there that would have a hundred hours, eighty hours, somewhere around that. And, and at any given time, you had about five or six that would come out there to do some work. And they can do, they can do about anything that you, you know, you want them to do at the lake, and that's pretty much where it was at, was the lake. And we've talked about, you know, in the city, you know, trash buildup, you know, along some of the streets and neighborhoods and stuff, you know, you assign somebody, they can, they could do that as well. But, but it's with what we have going on at the lake right now with all that updates that we're doing, this would benefit greatly if somebody getting their time. And two, we had a conversation about that, you know, you may, you never know, I mean, somebody going out, depending on what their little charge is, be minor, just had to do community service and, and see what they're doing, and it could lead them to where they change their lives and then see, you know, I want to work for City Reedsville, whether it's public works or whatever the case may be. So I think it's a great opportunity to do it. I mean, we never had, I never had an issue with it. You're going to have somebody assigned to keep up with their time, turn it in, and you can get a lot of, lot of work out of, out of folks that's, you know, willing to come out there to get their time, and you'll, you'll have it. But I think it's a great opportunity.
Just to echo what Councilman Coats mentioned, I used the community service at Lawsonville Avenue School when I was principal there. Got every classroom painted, got the outside of the building painted. They did everything that just about I needed done, including shovel and snow during the winter months. And they were not a bit of a problem. Everything was done just excellent. I'd give it an A grade. And we do need some, some help with some of the litter pickup and things of that nature. And it would be a great help out at the lake.
I noticed in reading this too, that they had some strict guidelines, that they didn't have hazardous material or anything like that, so.
Yeah, all of that's in the contract.
That's good.
You know exactly what they can do, they can do. What's the pleasure, council?
I'd make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the community service work program recipient agency agreement and coordinate community service work program schedules with Ms. Morgan Maranziano.
Second. A second.
End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda is public comment. At the public comment section, if there's anyone who'd like to come up and speak for council, you've got three minutes. Give your name and address.
Representative Lucky City Brewing, 228 Gilmer Street. I see many owners of the, here in the room, and several of you on city council are as well. And, you know, it's been a nine-year project to make Lucky City Brewing a success here in Reedsville. And I'm here to sound the alarm that, that we're, we're almost there. I mean, we've done a year and a half of turnaround to try and get the brewery on its feet, and this, the social district is another tool that we need in order to make this happen. So many of us are doing the heavy lifting that it's taken to turn this around. However, without the tool of, of, say, the social district, I think that we're hamstrung, and I don't think we're going to survive another winter if we don't have a good cash position going into the next winter. So I see that the, the vote for the social district has been moved to July at the earliest. Can I propose that we vote for the social district before then, and then perhaps a second vote maybe in the summer, or whenever that happens, that we can nail down the hours of the social district, or, you know, the rules, or whatever the case may be. But at least perhaps next month, we put it out there, the social district is approved, we're moving forward. The next vote is going to be on what will be the conditions of that social district. So we've gotten letters from, from, well, of course, from Lucky City, but Celtic Fringe is in agreement, and it's, it would be a valuable tool for, for many of the merchants here, and not just, not just the, the evening merchants, but also the merchants who, you know, sell clothing and antiques and these kinds of things, because you can carry your drink out onto the street and into shops, so. Anyway, that's, that's my hope, that we can move forward with this, because, because, yeah, like I say, I mean, the brewery's just getting by, and we need all the tools we can, we can get, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I had, I got a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. As you push for the social district, and this is, this has come up in, this, this has been a topic for a while. So I've been back and forth, listening to different folks, business owners and whatnot about this. So tell me, since you're trying to sell this to the council, how having a social district and being able to just walk around the street and go to different shops is going to benefit that if, and I say this, it's only going to be as good as, as your, your businesses down here cooperate with it.
Sure.
So if you have a majority of your, your businesses here in downtown, that say absolutely not, they're going, not going to participate in it, and don't want people coming in their business with alcoholic beverages, so now what are you, how, where are you at now with the social district? How beneficial is it going to be?
I think that's a minority, minority of business owners that don't want to invite customers into their, into their shops, right? I think that that would be an unusual shop that says, no, we don't want customers, right? So.
No, I don't think it's unusual. I think it depends on what somebody's selling and, and what they're doing, you know, coming into that business with, with a cup or whatever it is, you, how y'all want to design it. Not saying that I'm against the social district. I, I'm up here, you know, representing the people as well, and so I'm listening to the concerns from the public, so.
Well, business can certainly say, no, that you're not welcome in my, in my store if you have a drinking area, and that's fine.
So what I'm saying is, if you have a majority of these businesses say no, they're not going to participate. So now all you're going to have is just leaving from, from one bar to another with, with a cup and a drink, and then you go into the next one and filling that up.
Well, what's the disadvantage of that? We can co-market with, with Lucky City and Celtic Fringe and Dirty Laundry and La Boca Loca. I mean, just, just those four businesses alone could be, we can create a, a night where, you know, you get a dollar off at, at this if you go to that, and, you know, by the end of the night, you've maybe had four drinks at four establishments, and you've had, brought people into downtown. It certainly is a novel idea, and Reedsville is one of the last, if not the last, in the area to do this, so.
So the second thing too is, how, how do you monitor how many drinks an individual has?
Well, that's, that's up to our.
You know what I'm saying?
Our ABC licenses.
Right.
We have to, as bartenders, we have to.
So somebody comes in to Lucky City.
Yeah.
Sits down and has four, five beers.
It needs to be stopped right then.
Okay, but say it's three beers, and then they want to go walk down the street, so they have a cup with your beer in it.
Yeah.
And then they go to Celtic Fringe.
Yeah.
They sit down at Celtic Fringe, they have two or three there.
But there's a bartender at Celtic Fringe, right?
Right. But how, how does that other establishment know how many they've had at another?
Oh, they've walked in with a beer, right? Or, or a wine or something.
Yeah, I'm saying, you're going to have a cup that says Lucky City, and they know they came from Lucky City.
So let's say at, at Lucky City, and you have a bartender that went off shift, and there was somebody who had three drinks, and then another bartender comes on, and there's a fourth drink. So how, I mean, even, even within that establishment itself, you don't have the knowledge of, of what's going on earlier in the day.
I mean, I think, I think there's a whole lot of things having a social district is one. And I, and I read what we were provided as council on social districts and what cities participate, and read a lot of the reviews, and some of them were positive, wasn't a lot going on. Then there was a lot that they had issues with, that then their downtown was becoming trashy, because they were finding all these cups from these different establishments. And then the city was having to come in and, and clean it up, then having to go and deal with those establishments.
All of these businesses pay taxes, though. So let's, it's not great if there's trash in the streets. However, I mean, it's part of the, part of the taxes that we, we all pay as merchants downtown, right? That, that if this happens, it's not great.
Yeah, it's not all about just taxes. It's about if you have a social district and then, and then you, and it just runs rampant, which it can, because there's no control in certain things.
This isn't a college town. It's not going to be running rampant. You don't have twenty-one-year-olds, I mean, you have some, but most of the population that, that goes between these establishments look like me. I mean, we're, we're old people, right? We're not, we're not that kind of crowd, for the most part.
Well, I mean, you're going to have issues with it. That's all there is to it, because when somebody leaves your place, you can't, you can't control them going to their car or vehicle and, and filling up that cup, and then walking down to Dirty Laundry or, or Celtic Fringe, or whatever the case may be.
That can happen without a social district.
Right.
People can drink in their car and come into an establishment, but it's up to the bartenders to preserve our license, our ABC license, in order to continue to.
I understand about the ABC license.
Okay.
But, you know, the other thing too, and I don't have any more questions for you, but the other thing I want to make a comment is, I think at this point, and we've, I've shared this before, that the way our downtown is right now, I think our concern, my concern, this is just the way I feel, it's my opinion, and they have theirs, but we have a more serious problem of trying to get these vacant buildings in downtown full.
We have so many problems here.
Versus having, having a social.
Hang on a minute. We've got another topic.
Just having a social district and worrying about a social district right now to benefit you and one other that wants to participate. If, if we had all these vacant buildings downtown full, I could probably see social district thriving and, and doing well.
That is so backwards.
We're not at that, we're not at that point.
Without the respect, that is so backwards.
Nah, we're not at that point.
Okay, we'll shut this down right here at this point, and.
I got a comment that I would like to make. So I read the report from Lucky City, but I want to start by saying I am a proponent of the social district.
Thank you.
And I do see the multiple ben, benefits and facets of it, as I have made that clear in our last budget retreat on Thursday and Friday. But what, what I'm not a proponent of is, is expediting this, you know, a month ahead of time, because we have tasked the city manager and staff with multiple facets of this social district, not just to downtown Reedsville, but the City Lake and all the other events that go along here. So it's just not a matter of voting in this particular policy to allow a social district in downtown right now. But we have Lucky City Brewery, Celtic Fringe, which is by reservation only, and show up and try to walk in the door without reservations, you're not going to get in there every now and again. So I sympathize or empathize with you in terms of Lucky City, whatever financial hardships you guys may have, but where else are they going to go? How is this going to pad Lucky City's pockets to save the brewery before the winter?
Let's think about Fab Fest. Can we for a minute?
When we don't have another business here for them to, to socialize in a social district right now.
Dirty Laundry owners are right behind me, okay? They're going to talk as well.
They're not open. Are they going to be open by July?
Listen, just give that a minute, okay? So let's just think about Fab Fest, for example. On this schedule, we won't be ready for Fab Fest. So we'll sell a beer down in, in Undermarket Square's roof.
So, no, that's being handled as well in the social district for Fab Fest, so I would encourage you to go back.
How are we going to be allowed to carry a beer onto the street, onto, onto Scale Street, under the current plan?
Go back, go back and review Thursday's and Friday's budget retreat. That is, one of the facets of the social district is to be able to do just like Eden, Madison, Mayadan, and everybody else does, if this passes. I was the one who proposed that. So we have multiple facets that need to be worked out, ironed out, and everybody agrees to it. And if we go jumping and piecing and putting pieces together, sixty days ain't going to make or break a business here, because we only have one business really, Lucky City, that's selling brewery that has a beer right now. Dirty Laundry's not here. They're months away from opening. They don't even have equipment in, they've done nothing to the facility. So in my opinion, by the time we time all this out and make sure that we get this right the first go-round, it's going to be open, and it, and hopefully it will pass for the Fab Festival and everything else. I'm definitely against voting on this and expediting it, because sixty, sixty days isn't going to make or break Lucky City Brewery. If it does, then there are more hardships there than the social district for us to expedite a social district, because you have nowhere else for your customers to go and get another drink to socialize with at this point. And by July, you still won't have anyone else in business that is downtown serving alcohol. So it's a moot point, unless they're going to walk to Robin Ray's and get a forty and then come back across town, we don't need a social district right now.
Sorry.
Councilman Martin, let's, let's, let's shut it down. We'll go shut it down.
My point is, this schedule's not going to work, because this current schedule is going to have a social district at best case by Christmas. And what good is a social district in the wintertime, so.
Thank you, Mr. Skolber. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, three minutes. Name?
Perry Savis, 744 Monroven Road. My wife and I own Dirty Laundry Tap House, or what the future of Dirty Laundry Tap House will be. I understand Rob's position. I'm vice president of Lucky City Brewery as well. I think we've done an amazing job to try to turn that place around with very little help, very little resources, basically absolutely nothing. Regarding the timeline, I guess that's here or there. I, I understand, like, sooner, sooner the better, but I would like council to understand, you know, my family and I are putting almost a million dollars into this venture of ours. I would ask all of you to tell me when the last time someone's confronted council and said, hey, I want to open up a business downtown and put almost a million dollars into it. I don't think it's happened very often. And I'm not asking for the world, I'm not asking to say, hey, well, look, who's this guy and this family coming in here doing this? We love Reedsville, this is where our home is, we want to make sure we're all going to have a viable entrepreneurial experience here. And I'm not saying that, you know, there won't, there wouldn't be something negative that could potentially happen with a social district, or that's going to make or break us. I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying, I think, thinking of like, well, let's wait till more people come, and then we'll think about it. Well, how are we going to get more people to come? Like Madison's doing this already, Damos, all these other local municipalities are doing this. Rob and I and my wife met with Summer in Montana, we had a great meeting, talking about all the research and all the things behind it. Greensboro does it? I mean, Greensboro does it, like, come on. You guys have been downtown Greensboro? Nothing like downtown Reedsville. We don't have the same demographics. Like Rob said, we're not a young college town, we're not spring break throwing beats everywhere. I think it's just another opportunity, like you sat here and said, Tom Holderby has a not, hundred and ninety inspections. Where are those hundred and ninety people going to go? Right? It's like, I don't think we should be playing catch-up. I think we should try to see the vision and say, okay, if he's building a hundred and ninety, I'm also a builder, and I really appreciate you guys approving this third-party inspector thing, because Dirty Laundry's not moving anywhere, because my plans have been submitted to the county for over a month now, waiting on plan review. So we're all far behind, but this is why we're not moving, because I'm waiting on plans, because we don't have anyone local who can approve our plans. Same thing with Lucky City, we're trying to put a kitchen in there. Neil left in November, our plans are still in limbo. We're waiting on the county, you know, to give us our kind of building permit. So there's a lot of things that are happening, but very slowly, because we don't have the manpower to do it. But I would just like to, to ask everyone to just to rethink this. Like, I don't think it's a bad thing. I, I think Fab Fest was a must. I think we're all sitting in there, there's beautiful vendors, the weather's gorgeous, there's all these businesses that are open, and we're stuck like cattle, sitting inside Market Square. There wasn't even tables and chairs. What were we supposed to do? Like, it wasn't very fun. So why not just have the community experience, open it up, let everyone walk around and do their thing, and enjoy downtown Reedsville? We have, yes, sir.
Angela, could you please provide these two gentlemen with the notes for Thursday and Friday's council meetings? Everything you're saying, we had this discussion two weeks ago, we're well aware of it. The point of it is, is if we voted tonight for a social district, how much money is it going to put in Lucky City's pocket? How is it going to save or pad any financial dollars? Because that is your guys' push. You're arguing a moot point, because we already know everything, and it's coming in with the UDO in July. Hopefully, all council members will pass it. But you're arguing a point that we already know. all council members will pass it. But you're arguing a point that we already know. Get the notes from the last council meeting on Thursday, Friday, review them. Everything you're saying, I've already said.
And we're very.
Believe me, sir, we're, we're working on this.
And we're very serious about it.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess then that's, then I guess that's the most important part. Like, if you guys are, are serious about it.
Review the notes in the meetings from the previous council meeting that we had in the budget retreat, the UDO update, Thursday and Friday. Everything you're saying, we spoke about Fab Fest, we talked about all this. So there's multiple facets of this social district that all needs to come together. And we're going to do it all together. We're going to do it one time and we're going to do it right. It is not going to save or make, if it makes or breaks Lucky. You're, how, if you had plans right now and you began to construct Dirty Laundry, when would you be ready to open to the public?
Hopefully July, August latest.
Okay. If it goes into effect July, and when it goes into effect in July, if we pass it, we've already discussed policies, we've discussed cups, we've discussed all of the, every facet's going to roll out. So it's not a matter of voting on a social district if it passes and then coming back 30 days later and voting again. We've eliminated all that in a two day meeting to make all this happen. So I feel you, but it's not, I don't agree to stop all the other work of where this social district and where, we're not allowed to drink alcohol at the Regent City Lake. You know that? You go to 4th of July, you can't drink alcohol. So we're addressing that. If you go to the City Lake to camp out, you cannot have beer outside of your camper by the rules. We're addressing that. So there are multiple facets of this. It is not going to save one business because where are they going to go to socialize? Answer that question. If we passed it today, where are the customers of Lucky City going to go to take their, dip their beer throughout the social district? Where are they going today?
I mean, I don't, I don't have an answer. But I mean, I guess.
The city.
I guess my, my point was, I just want you guys to be in the right direction with this. Cause I know there's been a lot of back and forth and we don't know what we're doing. We're going to get into craziness. I just.
Believe me, believe me, we're working on it. We're working on it. We're serious about it.
And now can we get my plans approved faster than a month and we can start construction?
Work on that.
Angela, Lucky City Kitchen too.
We're working on that too.
Thank you.
Somebody else there?
Okay, come on up.
How's everybody?
Okay. Please give your.
I took these notes for myself because I do have senior moments and I don't want to stand up here and forget what I've had to say.
Please give your name and address.
Washington 806 Thomas Street here in Reesville. And I've been in here, been in Reesville all my life and I love being here. Don't want to go anywhere else. But anyway, I wanted to start off by saying that I live off of Thomas Street. And if you go on Barnes Street, it is several poles, I don't know if it's light poles or what, they're leaning. And it's been several, they finally got repaired after about four or five years, but it's still some more before you go under the bridge to KFC. And they're just leaning. Any strong wind come through or anything like that, they're going to fall on somebody's vehicles. And I've been concerned about that, hoping that someone would take care of it. And I don't know if I'm at the right place to talk to whoever. But you guys can ride down through there. They're, they're just leaning. They're just leaning. And also, the construction on Barnes Street, okay, my husband told me to make sure I brought this up because we were leaving Greensboro last week and we do go patronize Greensboro for some things, not always in Reesville. And it's hard, we're seniors and it's hard to see at night with that constructions that's going on. It's really bad through there. If you don't go through the day and if you go at nighttime, it's really bad to see. And he, he told me to make sure I brought that up. And also, I'm getting ready to finish, the lights on Barnes Street, up and down that street, you can barely see from one house to the, to the next. But if you go in some neighborhoods, it's very lit up. I like to walk after the sun has gone down in the summertime and I like to see where, where I'm going. And it's, it's dark down there. It's dark in that area. And I'm concerned about my safety and I'm concerned about seniors that want to get out there and walk at nighttime, you know? So another thing, then I'll stop. The trash below McLawn Funeral Home, people like to dump that trash on that street for some reason. And every now and then you'll see somebody has cleaned it up. I would be willing to go with a group of people if, if that was set up to make sure that area stays clean, but they just love to dump their trash over there. I don't know if any of you guys have been through there, but they do it all the time. So it's no kind of whatever that can be put up there. I know we probably can't afford to have lights put up there where you can see people, driver's license, or I, I don't know. I know we're not a big city to do stuff like that. But I was just wondering if anything can be done about that because it's, it's just nasty, you know? People just dumping off, off this trash all the time. And I was just wondering if any of this can be addressed and who I need to. I would be willing to help because I don't mind helping clean it up, but it just needs to be taken care of. People have found out, I guess, you can just dump trash there and it's, and it's okay. Cause they, they've been doing it ever since I've been on Thomas Street. So I go down that way sometimes. So I see it all the time. So.
If I may.
I agree. The lights are being addressed. That's what Josh Beck was up here earlier presenting the light bill. They're putting light poles in on the Barnes Street.
Okay.
If Chief Gibson, you could, if someone could line him up to put the camera up, then we do that. They have a camera they can get out and try to catch people dumping over there.
It's because of nobody, you know, when, when you go down that street, nobody can see it. It's so easy to dump stuff out there. That's why they do it. Because you can throw it out there and nobody ever knows who did it. So at one time, we did have cameras and the county was monitoring that, but I don't know if it is now.
And if they want to form some type of cleanup crew, like I said, I would be willing to go down there and do it, but also let people know it's not going to be okay. I mean, it's, it's designated areas. I've even seen mattresses thrown out there. So that takes a lot of time for you to load them up and then come all the way down there, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Washington is one of my former parents. And her son sitting beside her is one of my former students. Is anyone else who'd like to come before council? Okay. March appointments, enclosure 11. And city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So for the March, Andrew's report, I just want to do a couple of highlights, if that's okay. First of all, thank you so much for a very successful retreat last week. We do have a special call and council meeting on Tuesday, March the 18th at 5:30 PM to discuss vacant building policy, community development complaint driven and proactive enforcement policy and the Revitalize Reesville Initiative. Also, our fiscal year 25, 26 budget work session will be Tuesday, April 22nd at 5:30 PM. And then also, the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference is April 29th through May the 1st in Greenville, North Carolina. Couple other tough dates. Really excited to announce the Pet Rainbow Bridge Project. The city of Reesville is partnering with Aiden Blackburn, who's a Boy Scout, who's in Boy Scout Troop 432. Mr. Blackburn has agreed to work on creating a rainbow bridge at Lake Reesville as his Eagle Scout project. This project is designed to be a place for people to remember their beloved pets and place mementos such as their pet's collars along the bridge as a memorial. This project is expected to be completed May of 2025. So we thought that would be a really unique concept for the city of Reesville. Couple other updates is the, we had Lunch and Learn on Thursday, March the 7th at the Carriage House. The topic was retirement planning and benefits. Our next battle of the cup will be Thursday, March 27th at 2:00 PM at the Parks and Rec. This month's battle will include Best Banana Pudding Recipe, Team Hustles and Red Light Greenlight. Our annual employee family picnic will be Saturday, May 17th at the Splash Pad. And evening this year is a luau. And then I also want to give a congratulations to Dean Isley, who retired from the city of Reesville with 25 years of service in public works on February 28th, 2025. Thank you so much for your service. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this month.
Council members reports. Councilman Martin.
I'll forego my report.
Okay. Councilwoman Dejeuner.
I just want to thank everybody for allowing me during the time of my surgery to participate in Zoom. I wasn't able to get out to local meetings, but I was able to do some things by Zoom. And on the 20, the 17th of February, I was, attended a special call meeting at City Hall by Zoom. On the 26th, I attended the Reesville Chamber by Zoom. And I'd like to note that the Reesville Chamber is rebuilding itself to support the community even more than it has in the past few years. On the 26th, I attended the Cone Health Philanthropy Board Meeting by Zoom. And then on the 27, 28th, I attended the City Council Retreat. Thank you.
Councilman Coates.
Later, I gotta make some changes to mine.
Councilwoman Teresa Scoble.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will forward your mine also, but I would like to announce a week from this Friday, March the 21st, is the Kiwanis Annual Pancake Supper at Reesville High School. All the pancakes, sausage and beverage you can eat for $10. We will, all the kids 10 years and under eat free. Their pancakes will be served on frisbees that they can take home. We also will be raffling off a 36 inch Blackstone Grill and a 70 inch flat screen TV. That's the night of the basketball games. I think it's in between Final Four and something else. But the basketball games will be live on TV. So come eat pancakes, watch basketball games, and then you might have, if you feel lucky, you might get to take that TV home. So 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, March 21st, Reesville High School, pancakes, all you can eat. We look forward to seeing you there.
Your report to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to forego my report as well, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank the city manager and all of you, you know, for your support, for the cards, the prayers and all of the city staff that reached out to my family during the passing of my mom. It touched our hearts very much and I thank you.
I'm going to forego my report too. And give some information in reference to one of Reesville's finest. I was made aware in talking to the chief that we had an emergency situation at South End School. And that one of our officers who happens to be present here tonight saved a young lady's life. Lieutenant Sherrod Carter, would you come up, please? If you want to see what a hero looks like, you have an opportunity to do that on tonight. When I was principal at Los Amalavenue School, I learned the technique for CPR. I used the, the, what's the name of that unit that, that's used? The AD unit? And I prayed every day that I would never have to do it. This young lady right here saved somebody's life just a few days ago. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate it. Everybody in here appreciates it. And I know that young lady and her, her family appreciates it. If anything you'd like to say?
Doing my job. Doing what I had to do. Jumping in there when someone needed me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our police officers don't always get positive recognition and they do a lot of wonderful things here in Reesville. And while I make mention of that, we had a little disturbance at a basketball game. Our police officers jumped on it right away. There were no injuries. Nobody was hurt. And we got the game started back up shortly. The administration at Reesville High School was also prompting what they did and taking care of that situation too. So. Yeah, I know. Yeah. We have a representative from the chamber and Pro Tem reminded me on occasion I will let it slip my mind. So she'll give us a report from the chamber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chamber Member, Council Members and Madam Manager. Thank you for having me today. I'm Jennifer Lester. I have the honor of serving as the board chair for the Reesville Chamber of Commerce this year. And with me tonight, I've got Reverend Wes Pitts, who is also on our board, Rory Sawyers, who is part of our executive board, Sherrod Carter, who is one of our amazing ambassadors. And I hope I didn't.
And hero.
Yes, and hero. Definitely. Just a couple of updates from the chamber for you. Last week, we had an amazing chamber coffee at Reesville Orthodontics. We had a huge turnout for that. It was a wonderful event. Upcoming events we'd like to let you know about. Michael McDowell, you may know, is a race car driver. He drives Chevrolet number 71 for, I think, Spire Motorsports is what I saw. Used to drive for Loves. And he, they are holding a meet and greet at Impex Motors on March 28th from 11 to 2. So he's going to be in town for a race in Martinsville, I believe. And we would love for everybody to come out and meet him and learn more about the ways that he gives back to the community and, and all the things that he does. The chamber has started doing something that they're calling a cash mob. And basically whoever's available shows up with $20 in cash to flood a local business or restaurant or whatever it is with some love that particular day. We don't know who is, well, most of us don't know who it's going to be. I'm sure Diane and her staff know who it's going to be. But it's, we find out that day, show up with some cash and, and help spread the love. So we just had a great cash mob this month at Firsties. It was delicious. And we have the next one coming up April 4th at 12:00 PM. And again, I can't tell you where it's going to be, but stay tuned. There is a countywide chamber coffee that's going to be hosted by Level Up Roco at the Economic Development Office on April 8th at 8:00 AM. We hope everybody can come out to that. And the next Reesville Chamber Coffee is going to be, I think it's the first, it's April 3rd, the first Thursday in April at La Boca Loca. So we're very excited about that as well. And that one will be at nine o'clock. It's my understanding for space purposes, we're hoping for a good day and moving into the courtyard next to La Boca Loca. But we hope you can join us. There's several ribbon cuttings that are coming up. You can see those listed on your, your sheet there. But March 20th, Firsties, April 2nd, Midtown Salon and Spa, April 10th at Brightview Outpatient Addiction Treatment. They're having a grand opening and ribbon cutting. And then Community Baptist Middle School is doing a dedication and ribbon cutting on April 15th. So we're excited to be a part of that. New members are Mayberry and Calum McGinnis with Realty One, and we're thrilled to have them as well. So that's what I have to tell you today. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much. Again, we're glad to have with us tonight County Manager Lance Metzler. Throw your hand up in the air and wave it like, and wave it like you just don't care. All right. We're going to be moving to the first floor conference room for a closed session. Two questions. Oh yeah, that's right. Okay.
There were three boards and commissions that were being considered for appointments. For the Reesville Historic Preservation Commission, Morgan Jones did receive a majority vote. For the Reesville Human Relations Commission, majority votes were received by Wanda Harley, Morgan Jones and Ruth Webb. The Main Street Advisory Board recommendation. Morgan Jones, and Ruth Webb. The Main Street Advisory Board recommendation did not receive.
Okay. Now, we'll be moving to the first-floor conference room for a closed session to consult with the city attorney on two matters in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and economic development discussion pursuant to NCGS 143-318, 111A, 3 and 4. We won't be returning to the chamber. We'll close out in the conference room. Thank you so very much for your presence on tonight.
Take a break before we enter.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
All right. Any discussion? No discussion, raise your right hand.